All right, it's five o'clock. So we're gonna ask Pastor Clark, would you come up and give us our prayer to be followed by Councilman Crone in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you.
Let us look to the Lord in prayer. Oh eternal God, our Father, we come even right now. We just want to tell you thank you. Thank you, God, for another glorious day that you have made. And Lord, we're rejoicing and we're glad in it. Thank you, God, for being so good and so kind. And Lord, just thank you for waking us up this morning and starting us on our way and we was able to take care of things. And now we're still taking care of your business. So thank you right now, God, for all that you are. We love you for who you are, God. And thank you for giving your son, Jesus Christ, who came down from heaven height for our sins, God. So thank you right now. Now is time, God, that we come and invoking your understanding and your wisdom, God. We are finite, but Lord, you are infinite. And you are infinite in wisdom and wisdom and power, God. So we thank you right now, Lord, that we have enough sense to trust in you with all our hearts and lean not to our own understanding, but in all our ways, we gonna acknowledge you and you're gonna direct our path. So look on our council, look on our mayor today, God, all of our governing bodies, God. Bless even now, God. We ask that you come in and you just bless us, God, to take care of the city's business. Thank you for this place called home. And Lord, thank you for watching over our city, because if you didn't watch it over, watch over, the one that's supposed to watch over it, wouldn't, they're watching over it in vain. So thank you right now. And it was you, God, and we give you all the glory, the honor, and praise. Bless this meeting and for Christ's sake, amen.
Remain standing unless face the flag for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic which stands on our nation under God and indivisible, with everything just as to all.
Thank you. You can be seated.
Good evening to everyone. We're gonna call this meeting to order. We're gonna ask our city clerk, Ms. Joplin, would you please call the roll, please?
Mayor McClendon.
President.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
City Treasurer Suda Junior.
Here.
Councilor Crone.
Here.
Councilor Bruce.
Here.
Councilor Cat.
Here.
Councilor Harris.
Here.
Councilor Holt.
Here.
Councilor Hutchinson.
Councilor Mohammed.
Present.
Councilor Monday.
Here.
Councilor Mary.
Here.
Councilor Willis.
We have eight out of ten that's present. I haven't heard from Councilwoman Hutchinson or have you all heard anything from Councilman Willis yet? All right. Yeah, yeah, I just didn't get an update on my... We had no bids opening, so we're gonna move down to minutes. Can I get a motion in a second to approve the minute?
So moved. Second.
In discussion? Hearing now, on the paper, aye? Opposed? It passes? We had no O business. Ms. Mohammed, will you give me that motion to read by title only on R1 and adding R... Hold on, hold on. Now allow, first of all, can I get a motion in a second to add R2 to the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
On the paper, aye? Opposed? It's added. Now, Ms. Mohammed, you do R1 and R2.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I would like to make a motion that R1 and added R2 be read by title only.
May I get a second?
Second.
On the paper, aye? Opposed?
R1 is a resolution certifying the condemnation and removal of houses, buildings, and/or residential structures constituting a nuisance within the city of West Memphis corporate limits.
Hearing that read, can I get a motion in a second?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Are any of these that's on the demolition list a part of your action plan? Are any of these homes a part of your action plan?
Um, no, not right now.
Do you just basically demolition nuisance? Okay, thank you.
Well, I'll give you all some details about that later as well.
Thank you.
My little fact, excuse... Steve, can you get Ms. Merlin or Chad? Oh, I got Ms. Merlin right there. I didn't see you. Yeah, it's blocking. Okay, all right. On the paper, aye? Aye. Opposed? It passes. Will you get a resolution number?
Resolution number twenty-three, twenty-three.
That number is twenty-three, twenty-three.
R2 is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign a pre-development agreement for the West Memphis Entertainment District, R00-dash-project number PLD, PLD-00508, on behalf of the City of West Memphis.
All right, this just the... This is the same thing we did last council. I mean, it was the permission request, but it need to have been in the resolution form. We passed it, but they just to make it in the resolution form.
Is that the...
The study.
Oh, the study, okay.
The study, yes.
So moved.
I wasn't here last time.
May I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing now, on the paper, aye? Opposed? It passes. Get that a number, please.
Resolution number twenty-three, twenty-four.
That number is twenty-three, twenty-four. All right. Permission request, on the set, permission to accept the final statement, CDBG Annual Action Plan 2025. I'll turn it over to Ms. Felix.
Good afternoon. You should have in your packets the 2025 CDBG Annual Action Final Statement. Twenty-two-five allocation is two-hundred-forty-one-thousand-three-hundred-and-seven dollars. So that is a decrease from 2024. 2024 was two-hundred-forty-five-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars. So it's a decrease of three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars. We are still addressing the same projects, no change in our projects, and they are rehab, demo, admin, administrative, fair housing, and public service. There is no allocation this year for public facilities. This is the last year of our five-year consolidated plan, 2021 through 2025. This is the last year. So next year, we will be submitting our 2026 through 2030 consolidated plan. Are there any questions?
Ms. Felix, on housing rehabilitation, will this constitute more than just rehabbing, more than just roofing? It says the continuation of housing rehabilitation program in which a maximum of twenty thousand in community development block grant funds is expended on the rehabilitation for elderly, handicapped, low-income, and moderate-income owners. So people, citizens, will want to know what parts of their homes can be rehabbed or is it just roofing?
Only roofing.
Roofing only?
Only roofing.
Just wanna make sure we have that specified.
And if you look at your proposed activities in that handout, you'll see what the allocations are. Housing rehabilitation, one hundred thousand. Demolition and clearance, sixty-six thousand-five-four-six-eight-six. Public services, twenty-five thousand. Program administration is forty-eight thousand-two-sixty-one-fourteen, and fair housing, fifteen-hundred dollars. And that constitutes forty-one-three-oh-seven.
I would like to say about this summer jobs program, I had the opportunity to be in one of the first ones this particular year. That is not just a program, that is a gift, that's a calling. It's just astonishing how those young people are enriched and encouraged. I had the honor of adopting, I have a new grandson, he's a little white boy though, but he's my little adopted grandson. And I mean, he was just so, so extremely shy, but he has come out so much. And his grandparents are just extremely thankful for this opportunity to be able to help him. So Mayor McClendon, if you hadn't done anything else in your lifetime, this is something that you have done that's gonna put many jewels in your crown, helping these young people.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
If I may, on the demo clerics, this being federal funds, these properties have to be debt-free before we can spend these funds on them.
We actually run a title clearance.
Correct.
Yeah, there can't be any liens.
I mean, we have two cer... Two sources of revenue to demo with.
Right, exactly. But for CDBG...
But this one is specific to me.
Right. If there are liens against it, cannot, we can't tear it down. If there aren't any more questions, I just need you to approve, accept and approve the final statement.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
The roof program that we had twenty-twenty-four, this, is it gonna connect with the twenty-two-five?
You, when you say connect, you mean, are we gonna open up the application process or are we gonna just work from the list that we already have?
Work from the list that we already have, uh, I said, what I'm trying to get, the one that we had last year that was beat it on, we had money to do them all, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And this, this is gonna be the new, the new money gonna go for the, the new houses that we bring in?
Yes, sir.
If they already on the list, we're gonna work off of that. Is that right? How do you know?
So in the past, we've opened it up every year.
Correct.
We receive well over a hundred applications. Some people apply year after year after year. In my opinion, it's not fair. I think we should create, and maybe we need to start this next, the next five years on the consolidated plan, and specify that we're gonna work from a list until we work it down. That'd be up to you guys.
Yeah, my only concern in keeping it open, if storm damages, whatever, you know, they didn't have insurance, you know, and it is in deplorable condition, but this one is, that's not too bad. I mean, it needs to be done, but it's not near as bad as this. But that one now is, five years is just out, so... I know it's a decision your staff has to make.
Yeah, and we've created criteria to weed out applications. Of course, some are in worse shape than others. We've got to have some more stipulations on them because some of the houses are too big, which eats up all of our money. If they're in really, really, really bad shape and a roof would only put a Band-Aid on the problem.
That's true.
We won't do that house, because it does no good. It doesn't create any longevity for the homeowner.
I'm just wondering if we're better off looking at the total envelope and not just one aspect of it. Again, if we can get the envelope sealed, it's gonna create a much better environment for utility costs, gas, everything else.
That's what we try to look at.
Right.
If it's gonna be, the whole benefit of the house.
Right.
Ms. Felix, when we do the roofings, do we take off that old...
Oh, yes.
And if there's damage underneath that?
We replace all of that.
We apply all of the plywood or whatever else needs to be done?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Real expensive.
It can get real expensive.
I had one done two years ago. I know how expensive it is.
You know, the, the bidders, when they go out, they have to go out and look at every roof and assess it. And when you're just looking at, you know, just looking on the surface, sometimes you can't always tell what's going on underneath. So with those change orders, you know, we have to, we have to fix the roof, because when they tear it off, it has to go back on. So we have to do the complete job. And they get pretty pricey.
Love to find a metal supplier who's willing to make a really nice donation, furnishing material, and we go back with metal instead of asphalt. Not just me, I'm being selfish.
Were there any more questions for Ms. Felix? If I get a motion in a second to approve the CDBG statement?
So moved. Second.
On the paper, aye? Aye. Opposed? It passes. Thank you again. Also, committee reports, we're gonna start that with, uh, city police, police, police guard.
Okay. Police Commission met July seventh, twenty-twenty-five. We discussed updating policy manuals, updating policy manual saturation, fourth of July with minimum issues. A couple of officers, there were, they talked about a couple of officers leaving, going to Millington PD. We have officers leaving due to the pay scare. We currently have eighty-six officers employed at the present time. We also have some officers on leave, where during this time, we're on leave with the ministry, administrative pay. And the, the commission discussed the appeal process, uh, as far as the policy is concerned. Councilman Wayne Crone made a motion to look at the appeals and termination process. Our woman Mohammed seconded the motion. And the vote passed unanimously to go to the council. And basically, we're wanting to look at the, wanting the council to look at the policy to see if there are some areas where we can improve. We talked about there being a set time for, for things to take place within the policy. Police Department continues to ask for their own, I guess, advise, for legal, legal purposes. Police Department's personnel policy will be emailed basically to all council members by five o'clock, well, it should have been emailed by five o'clock on July seventh. Also, the clerk's office sent out emails as well for this, for this particular policy. Meeting was adjourned at twelve-fifty.
All right. I just, go ahead. I just wanted to make a statement, when it comes down to police department, those are administrative decisions. It don't go no more, go past the administrator. So I wanted to make that clear to my police department. And also, the thing with the city attorney, we need to get the city attorney involved, if we talking about looking at any other type of legal thing from the city attorney as well.
Utility. Utility Department met on July tenth, twenty-twenty-five. The West Memphis Utility Commission met in regular session on this date, eight-thirty a.m. First item on the agenda was to approve minutes for a June twelfth, twenty-twenty-five meeting. Minutes were approved and passed unanimously. The second item on the agenda was the June safety report. There were eleven days since the last recordable, uh, accident, eleven days since the last lost time injury and one recordable injury for June. The third item on the agenda was the financial report. This was presented by accountant Ethel Williams. She briefly gave an update on utility total expenses through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. She also presented a financial ratios worksheet, which shows the days cash on hand, fixed charge coverage, gross margin ratio, operating margin ratio, current ratio, and debt service coverage ratio. The fourth item on the agenda was staffing report. This was presented by Assistant General Manager Brett Sam. He reported that we currently have eight open positions out of seventy-six budgeted positions. The fifth item on the agenda was highlights of financial statements, explanation of changes. This was presented by General Manager Bob Atkins. He stated that the auditors finished the financial statements, and he briefly discussed the changes that were made. Sixth item on the agenda was completion of landscaping project, additional issues, and outstanding items. This was presented by General Manager Bob Atkins. He stated that they will be painting the curb and steps yellow and that they will also be replacing the trees in September. The seventh item on the agenda was the Groundswell Solar Project. This was presented by General Manager Bob Atkins as well. He briefly discussed the benefits of the Groundswell Solar Project. The eighth item on the agenda was wastewater treatment plant update. This was presented by engineer Katerina Webb. I hope I didn't mispronounce her name. She stated that the old ultraviolet treatment structure is now tied into the new UV system and that oxidation ditch two has been rehabbed and brought back online. Ninth item on the agenda was sponsor Main Street West Memphis for seventy-five thousand dollars. This was presented by General Manager Bob Atkins. A motion was made to approve West Memphis Utility for being a sponsor for Main Street. Motion passed unanimously. Last item on the agenda was to adjourn, and motion passed unanimously.
That concludes it?
Yes, yes, sir.
Airport.
The airport commission met this morning at eight o'clock. The work on phase one of the North Apron Rehab Project is complete. They were gonna do a walk through, a final walk-through this morning to make sure if there any repairs needed to be addressed or anything of that nature. The phase-two bid was awarded to S and N Contractors, and the grant application has been submitted to the FAA. The grant for the avgas rehab has also been submitted to the FAA, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilor Pickett, did you wanna give an update on the animal shelter?
Yes, sir. Since January the first, the shelter has taken in four-hundred-and-sixty-five dogs and three-hundred-and-seventy-two cats. Construction of the Carolyn and Ness Seacrest Animal Shelter continues, weather delayed. After speaking with the contractor and the architect, hopefully the completion will be between January and March of twenty-twenty-six. Shelter has hosted three low-cost spay-neuter clinics here in West Memphis. We'll be offering another one in October. The last one was June twenty-fourth through the twenty-sixth. They are currently advertising for an additional part-time kennel technician. The mayor has always been very gracious in signing those for the shelter. A lot of people, full-time employment is difficult to find, so part-time and volunteers is what the shelter lives on, and we thank them for being there every day. If you get an opportunity, check out the Gibson's Cat Cafe. It's a Facebook located in Conway, Arkansas. Many of our cats go there to find their permanent homes. And a very interesting website, or Facebook page, if you wanna go look at it. We're currently working with rescue partners in Millington, Tennessee, Chicago, Illinois, West Point, Mississippi, Memphis, Tennessee, Lower Rock, and Lowell, Arkansas. We're anticipating the final revisions to a cattle video made by Bean Productions. This is a group of Memphis volunteers wanting to raise additional funds for some expanded opportunities there at the shelter once the new shelter is completed. Shelter has secured an anonymous grant, or excuse me, funds of thirty-five thousand dollars, which is earmarked for the cattery at the new shelter once it is completed. Joel and Jennifer Hopson of Hopson Realty out of Memphis sponsored a fifteen-hundred-dollar promotional video that was filmed early in July. It will be used on social media platforms to promote the new shelter and our services in general. We're attempting to target specific areas of the city, especially apartment complexes, which are experiencing an overpopulation of cats. Working with the managers, it is an overwhelming issue. We have a program, it's called TNR, trap, neuter, and release, which is sponsored by different individuals who cover a good portion of the medical cost for the cats that we bring in or re-trap, neuter, put back out into population. We make sure the cats are healthy, had rabies shots, everything before we put them back out, no feral cats. So it, and it does help with the pest control problems that maybe some areas do have. And Carolyn is a... She's in an assisted facility right now. I always have your prayers out for her. Yeah, wonderful woman.
Ray, I got a question.
That concludes. Yes, sir.
What veterinarian do the shelter use?
Do what, sir?
What veterinarian do the shelter use?
There are some emergency situations where we have to use Memphis. Most of the time, it's Gearing or the veterinarian there in Marion.
Bell.
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 So I apologize for not knowing his name that quickly. But ninety-nine percent of the time, our, our funds are always spent here locally. But occasionally, in emergency situation, we do go to Memphis.
I know they told me when I got it done, when I adopted my dog, but I forgot which one, but it's about, been about a year now, I wanna take her in to get her checked out.
Right. We have a lot of donations that come through the alliance that pay for the medical expenses. Taxpayers are not picking up that tab. Last time I looked at that account balance, I think there was forty-five thousand dollars in there, and it's spent for medical needs of our furry friends we bring into the shelter.
Got a quick question. At the Cat Cafe, can they order a good hot cup of milk?
I can promise you, we're gonna take care of it.
That concludes your report.
Yes, sir, it does.
I'm gonna turn it over to Councilwoman Mohammed. Families in Transition.
All right, thank you so much, Mayor, because I just received this a little before I came to council, and you're so gracious to allow me to read it. This is a Families in Transition, Critney County Homeless Report. It says, Families in Transition, twenty-four homeless report services statistics. Victims of crime served experiencing homelessness, homelessness was six-hundred-and-thirty-four people. Of those, six-hundred-and-thirty-four, two-hundred-and-fourteen ages zero to twelve, thirty-eight ages thirteen to seventeen. The non-victims served experiencing homelessness, a hundred-and-ninety-eight. Adults served, a hundred-and-fourteen. Number of adults who were elderly, seventeen. Number of adults who were women, ninety-four. Number of adults who were men, twenty. And number of children, eighty-four. Overall total homeless served, eight-hundred-and-thirty-two. Overall, adult homeless served, four-hundred-and-ninety-six. Overall child homelessness served, three-hundred-and-thirty-six. School district homeless count for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five school year, West Memphis School District had seventy homeless students served and parents. Marion School District, a hundred-and-eighty-one. Marion's number includes the eleven youth sheltered at East Arkansas Youth Services in Marion placed through the Department of Human Services beds. And many people don't understand this, but we do have a lot of children come to school who do not have a home to live in. They come to school, not as blessed as so many others, so we have to keep everybody in their prayers. That ends the report.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mohammed, were there any other committee or commission that I may overlook? All right, we're gonna move down to appointments. We did have one resume that came in that was Randy Sullivan for the at-large position. I think you all decided to give a deadline to the first?
A week from today.
A week, a week from today? Anyone else who may have in the resumes, a week from today to get those in for the at-large, the at-large spot that's on the utility commission?
Do we get it to you or to the...
You can get it to me, or get it to Ms. Patricia, and she'll make comparisons, because you all gotta make decisions.
Okay, that's right.
And as for the utility commission? All right. I hear no presentations. Father Papa wanna do that at the next meeting. I do have a few announcements, or quite a few announcements. First of all, I wanna say to our ninth mayor of our city, Mayor George Ferguson, just turned one-hundred years of age.
Oh, yeah, congratulations. She was my boss. Can I work the city hall?
Mayor Ferguson, she's the ninth mayor, and she turned one-hundred years old.
There was a, Mayor's a nice article in the...
Yeah, we got it.
New York Times.
Right here.
Yep.
Many people don't know, but I worked for the West Memphis City Hall when I was a young whipper snapper, and she was my, she was my boss.
I know she was still driving. Was she still driving, that's about two years ago?
A year ago.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. 'Cause she, my face, she lived down the street from me.
But she's, her name is not Ferguson anymore, though. I know, that's what she's always been.
Also, I wanna give you all the, a few updates on some different things. First of all, on the new businesses that have came to the city, you have Heal Boys have opened, Starbucks have opened, the Haven Behavior Center, as well as Refine Behavior Touch is another facility, and Crossroad Drug Testing, no, Crossroad Drug and Alcohol Testing. Testing for individuals who have to get tested for new jobs, for drugs, alcohol, different things, so there are five new businesses that are open. All right. After that, I know you kind of touched on the homelessness and the panhandling. Let me talk about this at the last council meeting. I think I read something from the attorney general, Tim Griffin, about could we, now, it's a lady I see on the corner of Missouri every day, I mean, every day. Is that panhandling or that's a job?
Lottering or panhandling.
It's a job with panhandling.
It's a job. She got, she got a pretty new Chrysler truck that she get in and when she leave there, I've seen her get in it.
Mayor, actually, there's a couple or so that are regulars at that one intersection.
But I think in that same report, maybe the one that I read as well, City Attorney Director, please, there's a difference between loitering and panhandling. I think they stipulated that.
Yeah, I, I think that what will have to happen, it's an enforcement issue really, because what they really have to be doing is causing some kind of obstruction of traffic or, or some type of, you know, issue with safety out in traffic. And so that means really the police department has to see them do it, you know, in order to write a ticket for it. The only other way, and I was discussing this with Councilman Crone beforehand, is if somebody was a victim of, let's say, them obstructing traffic somehow or another, then you could come and fill out an affidavit at City Hall. Well, right now at City Hall, it may be up at District Court before too long. But you could fill out an affidavit and if you were a victim, we could pursue it. But, you know, I mean, okay, you're gonna be arresting somebody who allegedly can't pay. And the judge, I can tell you from my experience, he's doing the right thing, which is he's not putting people in jail because they're poor. If they can't pay, he gives them an opportunity to get on a payment plan and if they mess it up, then they go to jail. But, but it's like fifty dollars a month and fifty dollars, fifty dollars down, fifty dollars a month, it's a pretty small payment plan. So I don't know if arresting them would get the result that we want.
But how do we differentiate between panhandling and loitering?
Well, I mean, loitering is saying you've got no legal right to be in usually a business. You know, usually you're loitering out in front of a business, not just in a public area. So when you're on private property, it's a different situation than it is when you're on public property. That's when this freedom of speech stuff comes in.
So what the people are doing out there now, they're just panhandling.
That's right. I mean, they're making money out there or they wouldn't be there. I've been saying that for years. Same guys out there at the intersection on the service road, he's been out there for years out there. I watched him hobble back to the motel where he's staying. But, but, you know, they have to do something to cause some safety issue typically, because I don't think you're gonna get panhandling in a public area, so.
They know the law, don't they?
Well, there's websites out there, I promise you, you can go to one of these websites that they've got and they'll tell you how much money they're making at a certain location, if they want to give out that information, because they might want to give out their spot, you know, so.
All right, there was that one. Matter of fact, if someone hit them on Facebook, hit the whole thing on Facebook, when Randy got the new, the new car and drove, call it by the mind.
Chrysler Pacifica.
Yeah. Okay. Also, I want to give you all some updates. On our South Loop Road, if you all have seen, I think Nick got some drone shots, you can see it's, it's on the way. And actually, what we have done, we have sent a letter, a petition to the governor and Jerry, they are Dr. Director, and I have officially sent in a request for an additional two million dollars to the, the governor. And I'm hoping that she, she come through. Would you agree, Bob? I think she gonna do pretty good on that, hopefully. It's much more money needed, but that will help us to move, to get past the part of the South Loop on the project that we do have coming here, so. Second is, we have started to continue our meetings with our public transportation. We're looking at trying to provide public transportation here in West Memphis. We also had a meeting today in Marion, when I met with Mayor, Mayor Brick of Marion, as well as the county judge, and they said they were interested in seeing possibly could they contribute some funds to a bus service. Now, they're interested in hearing and saying that they hear this story, but they did say they'd be willing to listen to see could they do something to make sure that people that may have to get to Marion to the courthouse or, or someone from Crawfordville or Earl or someone that needs to get here to Kroger's or somewhere, because West Memphis is the only city that pretty much got all the grocery stores, Walmarts and different things like that besides the small things that Marion have. So they would be interested in listening to that conversation, so we'll continue to move forward with that.
Do you think we can get an aldees here?
You know, actually, we did have aldees looking here and I just think that some people own land that feel they got oil and diamonds up under it. I think you know what I'm saying about that. So, but yeah, we, we always continue to try to draw in more people. Also, I would just want to give you all a little, a little update on this new program that we got going on, you know. A little below a year, we started the operation cleanup and clear out, especially in the trailer park area, and we was able to, to turn down many of the operated trailers in that area and we were keeping it cut. Now, we have started a program called Reclaim and Renew and what we're trying to do, most of them lots, we do have assets to them along with the Public Facilities Board. And what we are trying to do on several different levels, we're trying to get people that want to come in and build in that area. Also, not just come and collect the land, we want, if you're gonna get the land, help, help our coal enforcement, keep it cut. So we don't have to keep sending manpower down there as well, but if you want to build back in a thriving community area that has two brand-new schools, Jackson Wonder, Wonder Junior High, new churches in that area, a lot of development that's going on on the south end of town, we would like for people to take advantage and, and actually, we are not trying to, I don't know if I consider it public, consider it attorney, so this person that's telling it, attorney. We are not trying to make any money off of it, just be by the two thousand, we are selling it to them. Is that fair? So we are selling it back to you what we bought it for. As long as you got a plan and action and you getting ready, not just come down there and get it and then you gonna let it set for another three or four years, which guess what, who gonna end up cutting it again? Us, so we trying to get out of that. Then we just trying to get people to reinvest back in their own community with the land bank, because we got areas, not just in that one area, that's just one of them highlighted, but we got land on the north side of town, War Four, some in War Five, man, War Two, so we can get people to come over and finally start to build and bring that community back up by reinvesting within that community, and that's the goal that we trying to do. I'm gonna move on down to the, the most famous reindeer all, the most famous bridge in the world. The Wayne Crone Bridge. I'm sorry, I'm messing with you, Councilman.
That's okay, hey, that's all right.
But actually, we got some good news. If the weather permits and the weather, well, you know, it get, it rains or it's real hot, hopefully in three weeks, the Ridge Road Bridge will be open. I'm gonna have a band out there, I think I'm bringing fireworks and everyone out there. I need all you all out there, we gonna dance, we gonna do the whole nine yards, but that bridge hopefully will be open, they've been moving and if you all have been out there, and I know Councilman Crone, I know you, I know Counselor Paquette, some of you all been out there seeing the progress, Councilman Ho, condo is clear, it's new, you all is worn. The, the, the power lines are going in real good and definitely laying the slabs down, so hopefully projecting, if no major rain don't come through here in three weeks, we'll be walking across the bridge and I cannot wait. Also, Tilden Rogers Park update, how you all been at the Tilden Rogers Park? Three. Yeah, so you see, that, that's moving pretty good. You got three of the, the fields are turf, you go and look at the basketball course, the pickleball course, I know Councilman Ho, you love pickleball, so. It's just about ready to buy the ball, so a lot of this is going on, so. Then we hoping that that be soon be completed within the next couple of months, but it's moving along pretty good. I think Councilman Kay gave the update on the Elma Control Center, so that's moving pretty good as well. The study for the, our recreational center, Aqua Center, it's, it's how begun. It's a site on our, the West Memphis City page, and Nick, I hate to call, what's that website?
West Memphis dot com.
Yeah, westmemphis.com, I thought it was another site, but definitely be asking, they want to go in there and do the little survey and see how they can, we want to hear their opinions and what they think, so get more people involved at westmemphis.com. It's a survey, they can go in and check that out. Second, not second, let me, okay, I still got a lot more. The Summer Job Program is ending tomorrow. I'm telling you all, I should have done this and this is my mistake, I did have the opportunity to get some of the council people, I know I had, I'm sorry, I had Councilwoman Mohammed come in and, and put it on the spot, I'm sorry about that, but I just, if you all could see the impact that this make to these kids, I mean, it would touch your heart, your, your heart like it touches ours. It's amazing what they, you know, what the young kids doing and what they are learning, how they have been a part of different things, I mean, I called Ms. Taylor, but, you know, and Ms. Patricia, oh, there's just so many great things they have done. Michaela has totally jumped out of herself, you know, just loved doing what they doing. You got kids at the Fire Department Utility, everyone that's involved in doing things and they can be possibly in trouble, but guess what, they are doing positive things, earning money for the school and kids at the Parks Department, I mean, it's just, it's just all over the city and I want to thank all those departments here for taking these young people and showing them the way, but it was a great experience and they, the only thing I've been hearing is, I can't wait to get back. So, you know, definitely, we want to have as many kids as possible, so I just want to thank you all for approving it, Ms. Mohammed.
Also, Mayor McClint, my, my little boy, he got in the car the other day, he said, I made so-and-so, so-and-so money and I'm gonna get another check.
So, yeah, I mean, and believe it or not, you'll be, you'll be surprised how, how much them dollars to them, it really means to.
It means so much.
What, to someone, you or us, you may not be that big, but some of them kids, I mean, you know, that's coming from where they coming, the environment, the situation they coming in, it's major for them, so just to give them that opportunity to be a part of it and help the city learn. I know I did a mock council meeting and, and Councilwoman Mohammed was there, and I'm telling you all, no disrespect to y'all guys, but they ran the meet better than I could. And, and with all you all, I mean, the, the young man that played, Councilman Crone, you could have seen her. And she was from your ward, actually, we chose the people from you all's ward. And, I mean, they was amazed, we had City Attorney, we had City Treasurer, we had City Clerks, we even had people to come up and speak on citizen requests and things, and the whole kid was smart, when we talked about, I, I gave him a quick scenario, I said, well, are we gonna talk about quality of life, infrastructure, public safety, or the Ridge Road Bridge? Guess what? The Ridge Road, they're like, why are you talking about the Ridge Road Bridge? Where we need policing and farming, where we need things for the kids, where we need infrastructure and stuff. So they felt like that was not the top thing like it has been in this administration, but they learned a lot and I, I think, I can't wait tomorrow, if you all ain't got anything going on, come down to our Parks Department, Director Jones and Director Bo, they have happened with Turner Construction, are feeding them, all the kids, we gonna have all the kids down there, I'll be down there as well, talking to them and.
What time?
It's gonna be from nine to twelve, nine to twelve, nine to one, nine to one, nine to one. Yeah, so if you all ain't doing it, just stop by and just sprinkle a little words or something positive to them. We had a community meeting here Tuesday, and this is how the community meeting should go, not coming to look for chaos, but coming to look for solutions. And that's the way we did, I see Ms. Felix, I see she was here, and, and several of the council members was here as well, and this is what we want to do, we are team, we all want, whether how we look at making West Memphis better, whether we may disagree, the goal is to make West Memphis better. And just being able to come out, get some instruction, Ms. Felix was there to come over ideas of how we move forward and not just be one just talking about it, but being about making the change, so definitely when the planning department come over in another meeting, definitely we want everyone involved. I hear it also, Councilwoman Harris and Councilman Willis, if you all are doing a community neighborhood, not neighborhood watch, but a community meeting. And definitely I'll be there as well, so once you all get the dates, we'll definitely be there so we can talk about that. Yeah, to be real quick as I run through this, Main Street is doing a lot, we met with their board today, the Main Street Board, and their director, Raymond Whiteside, and Jim Jackson, they are doing a lot of things to get people back on Broadway. So on, starting on Monday nights, they have a movie night, starting in October, well, you can come out there, we got the cans laid on top of it, they'll be using the string just to show new movies like The Goonies, but not the new movies, but, you know, family, family-oriented movies. So it won't be anything crazy. On third, on second and fourth Thursday, they do Bike Night, the guys who got motorcycles, slingshots, everything like that can come out, food trucks are gonna be there. Also, Free Swag Friday, starting every Friday in September, they have a Fri, Swag Friday, where you just come out and enjoy yourself. Jeep Night is gonna be next Thursday, on the twenty-four, on August twenty-sixth, I noticed a lot of dates. Taste of the Town, so you all get ready for that, you know, Taste of the Town has been big in our city for some time. August fifth, the classic cars, so you like classic cars, they gonna be out there, so you come check that out. And on the nineteenth of this month, they having a karaoke, so you all can sing, come on out and get involved and I have heard Councilman Kat sing. So could definitely come out and be a part of that. They just trying to get more people on Broadway as we try to get new businesses on Broadway to make Broadway, it's, it's more like the center of our city, so definitely want to get everyone out involved. I don't have anything else at that, so. Do any other council person have any announcement or anything they want to add? All right, we're gonna go down to our citizen request. All right, we're gonna have, she signed up a citizen request, last council member, she said she can be here to this one, so we're gonna ask Ms. Renee Holmes, will you come up? We give five minutes, get your name, your address and.
Good evening, good evening. Name and address?
Just your name, we know, we know you're here.
Okay, okay. Oh, my name is Renee Holmes and I live at Turl. First of all, I want to just thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. I want to say before I start that I am a member of the Board of Directors at Southland and I, the Southland Management gives Mayor McClinten the credit for challenging them to be a game changer and they accepted the challenge and Southland was recently recognized as being a triple, being a diamond representative, so I wanted to just give co-accolades and again, to congratulate the city of West Memphis for partnering, partnering in that way. The reason why I'm here today is that I assumed the title of Ms. Crittenden County 2025 to compete on the state level for Miss Arkansas for America Strong, because I wanted a platform to promote organ donation. I did that to honor my husband who died six years ago in need of a kidney. And I'm here because I chose Ms. Crittenden County as a title. I grew up in Gilmore, but I currently live in Turl, because I think I'm bigger than just Gilmore and bigger than just Turl, I think I am a product of Crittenden County. So I've made it my mission to go throughout Crittenden County to talk about my platform and why I'm here. I'll just make a little aside, my brother told me at the pageant that I participated in, Renee, if you add those two girls' ages up next to you, you still older than them. And I told him, if you add their weights up, I'm still larger than them. But I'm charged, challenging myself to do something that's even bigger than that and bigger than me. And so this has certainly caused me to step out of my comfort zone and it's strengthened my resolve to advocate for organ donation in our community. So if you will allow me to begin in the same way I've practiced hundreds of times in my I am Renee Holmes, Ms. Crittenden County, a girl with a purpose, a passport, and a personality. I grew up in the Arkansas Delta, poor but proud. My parents raised six on faith, fried chicken, and the firm belief that hard work can take you anywhere. I spent summers chopping cotton and afternoons cleaning classrooms, not exactly glamorous, but it built grit. And that grit took me from the cotton fields to the boardroom to eventually owning my own farm. I earned an MBA and a CPA before retiring as a legislative auditor and a CFO. I married my teen crush, fluid, tall, fine, full of life, and we raised two amazing daughters together. But kidney disease took him from us far too soon and it fuels my passion for organ donation, my why. These days, I split my time between my Arkansas farm. These days, I split my time between my Arkansas farm and my Caribbean retreat. Part Southern belle, part island girl. Judges, I'll take my first question. I will conclude with saying this. I have a platform. It's called Soul Traveler. Say yes. Soul Traveler because it's just not about geography. It's about the journey that takes place inside. The kind that reinvents you. It goes beyond geography. It's not about where you go, but who you become along the way. Let me be the first to tell you, I have no idea where this journey is leading me. But I want to be, much like what the mayor said, I want to be a game changer for this type of advocacy. So tonight, I'm asking you, City of West Memphis, to say yes to organ donation, say yes to second chances to life. And if that's not your yes, say yes to something, a book, a calling, a relationship, a fresh start. But please say yes to organ donation. Signing up is simple, and know you're not too old, too sick, too still, or too late to make a difference. I welcome your thoughts, your questions, your stories. Let's start the conversation, and let's save lives together. Mayor, council members, thank you again for your time, and let's say yes.
Ms. Holmes. I, I want to say thank you, uh, behalf of the City Council and the mayor, for your leadership and everything you do for our community. You know, uh, I tried to get you out of retirement, but that's a long time ago. But, uh, I just want to tell you thank you. And also, I know you serve on Southland Board. I meet with Southland every month. We have a meeting, myself, O.C., Jason, and we talk. I just want to show you all, this is the Four Diamond Award that they received, that they gave to the city, because we work hand to hand together to make this happen, and I think we are the second person in the state.
I, I think he said we're the four, we're the only ones on this.
On this side, yeah, exactly, so.
And if I may add to that, he also said that we have the recognition for Arkansas and Tennessee, which is, uh, something that is not commonly done. They don't recognize it in both states, so. Again, but he, he certainly said they couldn't do it without what you all do here in this room, so thank you again.
She, she has those amazing daughters.
Uh, uh, thank you very much. She got it from my mom. Thank you very much. Thank you. May I tell her who is?
My name is Pearl Stewart.
Oh, Mr. Stewart, I feel like I know you. She's talking, okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And I must rush off to another event. Thank you so much for giving me this space and time.
No problem.
Thank you.
All right. We got one more individual that signed up for citizen requests, uh, Mr. Christopher Nelson. Will you come forward? Just give your name, your address, and you have the council.
Good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
My name is Christopher Nelson. And I can thank you, Mr. Mayor, and council members, for this opportunity to stand before you guys to present Crossroads. And, um, what we are, we are local business, been in business for twenty-five years here in the City of West Memphis, and served a lot of businesses throughout the mid-south as well. What we do is we do drug and alcohol testing. We have certified collectors who are trained in the, uh, drug testing industry, uh, for us collecting, uh, federal and non-federal testing. Uh, they are certified in the procedures of, uh, collections and all. We have representative on staff that's available twenty-four seven, around the clock. Offer onsite bulk testing, uh, that we can come onsite and do testing. Limited time in our facility, which, uh, allows your employees to get back out and be more productive throughout the day as well. Um, seven to ten minutes, you can, you're there in and out. We specialize in drug and alcohol testing only. Uh, and that's, we're able to get people in and out the door. Um, we offer onsite testing for randoms. We have a random pool. We also have TPA and consortium. Which means we, uh, can manage your programs. Um, we, um, as I said, uh, the turnaround is, is, is one of the most important things. It is, we also have a web-based portal. You can go in and you can actually schedule. HR can schedule testing from one computer, any computer, any time of the day, and receive the results. Uh, you can track it from that, to that, back to that same computer in a timely fashion. Uh, M.I.S. report can track and report on drug and alcohol testing. It's a database of regulatory industries, of regulatory industries, you know. It helps to, uh, ensure that you are up to date in your random testing pool, that you are meeting the requirements and the mandated requirements each year, which is about fifty percent, uh, drugs, I believe, annually, and ten percent for alcohol. And what we do, we manage that, and we make sure that you are in compliance with that. We specialize in, in the drug and alcohol industry for keeping you in compliance. We, uh, we also can actually navigate you through the Clearinghouse, if you're not familiar with that, the Clearinghouse. Um, Clearinghouse is, is an online database that gives in state employees, state law enforcements, uh, employers in state law enforcement. FMCSA, which is the Department of Transportation. Information regarding a CDL holder or CLP holder, drug and alcohol violation, any violations they have. You can actually go in and find it out. We can navigate you through all that. There's a brochure in front of you guys that I have. It, it gives you an idea of everything that we do. And I know I don't have that much time. It's a long list of things, and so I'm just trying to hit on some things now. We also, um, can navigate you to the return to duty process. Any, any, uh, donor or CDL holder that has gone into SAP program, uh, they have to go through the return to duty process. I mean, you have to see a council. We can navigate you through that as well. And we, uh, have two other locations in, um, uh, Doherty, California, as well, as LA, California. And we are a family-owned business as well. So hopefully, we can actually, uh, through the information that you have, any brochures there and inserts, can provide service for you guys to help you manage your program better. I don't know what type, whatever, uh, your, your current provider is doing, I'm quite sure we can improve that. So any questions? I can answer any questions if possible.
What's your location?
Two oh three West Bun. West Memphis, Arkansas.
There's another medical provider located with you there, isn't it? He just recently came to West Memphis, I thought.
We've been here for twenty-five years. We've been in operation for twenty-five years.
When is that building?
We just transferred from Wood Street. We were at one twenty Wood Street, and we kind of expanded it. We went to two oh three West Bun.
Do I have any other questions? Thank you, sir. Thank you. Were there any questions from the council that you all want to bring? Well. Hey, none? Can I get a motion and second to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right, goodbye. Oppose? Your turn.